Okay, this meeting is called at order. Would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Stoudabaker?
Here.
Councilors, Mans?
Here.
Kohoff?
Here.
Nguyen?
Here.
O'Neil?
Here.
Lamott?
Here.
And Wendlin?
Here. Would you stand and join me in the flag salute, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business is election of council president, and I would nominate Jackie Mans.
Second?
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you, everyone.
Ms. Lewis, you're gonna give us a presentation from Metro. That would be great. Come on forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having me here tonight. I am delighted to start off 2020 with a visit to your Council. No better way to start the year than with a first meeting, just letting you know a little bit about what's going on at Metro and what our priorities are. So first of all, a big hearty thank you to the voters of the region for the passage of our Parks and Nature measure. That's technically new since I was last here, since I left about 45 minutes before the successful passage. But want to thank the region's voters, supporters, and especially Clackamas County voters, because we showed up in Clackamas County with overwhelming support, 62 point something percent, and outdid even Washington County. So it's a community-driven measure that's gonna fund projects in our county, and it's gonna help us move forward with our strategic plan to address equity and diversity within our Parks and Nature programs. And I look forward to working with you to implement important projects, and particularly to hear about what you have in store for our local share program, where you know all cities jurisdictions that manage parks are able to partake of those funds as well. So lots of good ahead of us for investment in natural areas, and for the first time ever, explicit investments in trails. Second, I wanted to give an update on affordable housing. After the 2018 November Housing Bond at the Metro level, we've had much success, particularly with Clackamas County being one of the first three IGAs. The Housing Authority in Metro not only have the plan in place, but the okay for money to start to flow. In particular, Clackamas has a pilot project over in Gladstone, but also they'll be working through their process. Again, the goal is to work across the region to create 3,900 permanently affordable homes. That's enough to house 12,000 people, and these are our neighbors who need the help the most. They're 0 to 60 percent median family income, and our commitment is to make sure that we have the family-sized units in addition to the single bedrooms. Because of a favorable bond sale middle of last year and our AAA bond rating at Metro, our tax rate will be 17 percent, which is lower than what we anticipated. And again, as I said, there's already some pipeline developments for across the region, one here in Clackamas County. And I know we have staff from the Housing Authority in addition to Commissioner Schrader, who are gonna give you more in-depth about what they have in store for the implementation. With regards to transportation, the Southwest Corridor process continues. We have the draft EIS and the local preferred option, and the preferred alternative was selected mid-2018. The design and engineering continue in preparation for the final EIS, and I believe that's expected this year. Discussions are ongoing about funding, and a likely source of funding is a 2020 Regional Transportation ballot measure. But we're also gonna continue to pursue the federal funds, federal match, as well as state funds for the Southwest Corridor light rail.
What was the first measure you said?
The first?
You said there were two things you mentioned on that. What was the first one, please?
Oh, that the draft EIS and the local preferred option have been selected.
Okay, but you said funding came from federal.
Oh, we're expecting not only to fund Southwest Corridor through our 2020 transportation measure, but go after federal match dollars and state funding for the project as well. So speaking of our 2020 transportation measure, we've been going through a year-long process to start talking about a regional investment in transportation. We all know that the congestion has increased significantly over the past couple of years. As more and more people are in the region, are on the roads, it takes longer to get anywhere. And we also have continued needs for investment in safety. We've had a task force of 35 folks from across the region, about one-third representing local government, about one-third representing the business community, and one-third community and transportation advocates. And they've come together with a set of proposals of investment corridors that we actually were presented with their task force recommendation at Council just this afternoon. I know the task force is eager to now shift the conversation into programs that will touch areas not necessarily attached to those high-priority corridors, and also investigate six Tier Two corridor projects, which might include Highway 43. I want to thank the task force and the leadership for all the hours that they've put in, and will continue to contribute until Metro Council comes to a final conclusion, which we're expecting to be sometime this late spring, early summer, about the possibility of going to the ballot. The most important thing to note is we are still in a public input process. You know, we have a task force recommendation, but Council still has many decision points between now and referral. The next point for public input is actually next Monday, the 13th. We're hosting a hearing at Metro, doors in public open house at 5:30 PM, and then 6:00 to 9:00 PM hearing for comments from citizens and advocates from across the region, limited to two minutes per person. I hope you'll join us in the hearing and make sure that the hopes and concerns of Clackamas County on the west side are brought forward to Council. My garbage and recycling update is threefold. One, we know that many across the region are concerned as the international markets for recycling have shifted and changed. And we've developed recycleornot.org and some associated social media accounts, including Instagram, in order to help educate folks on what's recyclable in this region, with the hopes that we're able to quit the wishful recycling that we sometimes see. I know sometimes I'm holding something that I think it's plastic and toss it in the recycling, but that kind of contamination of things that aren't recyclable ending up in our recycling stream is what has led to our recycling product not being very valuable. So recycleornot.org is a tool that we're really pushing to make sure that we're able to clean up our waste stream and make our recycling product valuable. Materials collected through home recycling programs are finding their ways to new markets, and we're continuing to work on innovation in the sorting process and at facilities to make sure that we maintain our recycling rates in the region. In terms of system investments, we're having conversations at Metro about the opportunities to expand our capacity within the Greater Portland Garbage and Recycling System. We're talking about investments on the west side, where there currently lack investment from the public side of the system. And in particular, for the southern part of the region, we're looking at potential updates and reinvestment in the transfer station in Oregon City. Right now, we have a clog between the two uses that go on there. If you've ever done self-haul, if you've ever taken your waste yourself, you've noticed you literally have to cross with the commercial trucks that are also trying to do their business. Industrial engineers will start to point at all the log jams. So we wanna not only make it so you don't have to cross, but actually have a visitor or commercial experience that gets folks in and out as efficiently as possible. So we're looking not only in redesign, but potential separation of those two activities through additional land. So we're also looking at the possibility of processing food waste, not only at Metro Central, which those investments are starting to begin, but eventually at Metro South. So there's a lot under consideration for Metro South and making sure that we have the full suite of options in the southern part of the region. And then finally, I mentioned food scraps. Y'all were a leader in that. So we now have, I believe, all but one of our jurisdictions across the region having adopted food scrap policy, but your local businesses kind of proved the model. So I just wanted to thank you for your leadership on that. Community placemaking is a grant process that helps communities tackle challenges and opportunities through arts-based and equity-focused projects. Would encourage all of you to use your networks to raise awareness of the community placemaking grants, and we're going to award up to $190,000 in our grant cycle this year. Staff is available to help any group that thinks they might be eligible or interested in completing their application. And community-based organizations with nonprofit status or individuals who partner with a nonprofit as a fiscal sponsor are eligible. And you can apply at oregametro.gov, and the deadline is February 3rd. And I believe this picture is actually from a community placemaking grant-funded event here in Lake Oswego even, just a few years ago. In addition to all the fun we have planning for our region's future, we also get to make sure that this place is economically vibrant through our visitor venues. That's everything from the Expo Center and the Convention Center to bringing families together from across the region at the Oregon Zoo. Some really cool news from the Oregon Zoo out of last quarter of last year is our new partnership with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to have lamprey. Pacific lamprey are older than dinosaurs, they're older than trees, 400 million-year-old, real ugly but kind of cute creatures that you can go visit now at the zoo. And that's thanks to not only the partnership with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, but also the Confederate Tribes of the Umatilla Reservation, who actually helped bring in the lamprey. And then when they've had their stay, helped them go back to nature. So next time you're at the zoo, make sure to look for those little buggers. And with that, whatever remaining time and appetite you have, I'd be happy to field questions.
Councilor Kohoff?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to compliment, and I want everybody to know that I think very highly of Councilor Lewis's work. She is at every meeting that I'm ever at, and she's well-prepared. And frankly, Metro, the impact has been unbelievable. Chair Schrader is here. She apparently isn't chair this year, but the discussions and the prep that goes into those meetings is unbelievable, and it's very helpful. And I'm very proud that you are our counselor.
Thank you.
Councilor Lamott?
You mentioned Route 43 is a potential Tier Two or up-and-coming project, and that would be waiting for if 2020 funds come through to address that comprehensively. One of the questions I've had is because West Lynn has already done with their corridor study on Route 43, and then we didn't get a chance to go further north into our corridor. Route 43, McVeigh, Stafford are just jammed and congested. The county finished a safety study on Stafford, but we need more work. So is there any funds based on some of the feasibility money that was left over from the Oglo Bridge that could be used in the interim to get us going rather than waiting for a whole year of bond-making?
So there are remaining funds that are not gonna be used that were part of that IGA between Clackamas and Metro. At this point, we are not anticipating renegotiating the IGA. There's actually bike-ped crossing study and preparation work that's needed in association with the Abernathy Bridge replacement, because ODOT, left to their own devices, may not do the full study on that.
Really?
So within the scope of what the agreement is, which is bike-ped crossing across the Willamette River, I believe that there is still need, but basically adjacent to or on Abernathy Bridge.
Well, it'd be great, I think, not to get in the weeds today, but if you could just look to see if there's something. I didn't think they needed 500,000, but the whole corridor from the river down 43 from Portland and the Selwood ramp coming down, all the way down to West Lynn, we need to address it. It's getting out of control. And any help earlier than later, because it might be two years we'd have to wait if we're waiting for bonds to pass and whatnot. But if there's some money in that study, that would be helpful.
Well, even the current rounds of regional flex funding that will be approved later this month, even that kind of dollar isn't available until literally the same time as the first bonds will be available from transportation measure. So at this point, most study money isn't available until third quarter of 2021. There is a proposed program of future corridor planning, and I'd say extension of an investment corridor is absolutely prime on the top of the list for consideration of a future corridor.
Well, that would be great, yeah, to get something going on. Thank you.
And I think also engaging in the conversation around 43 is Tier Two, making sure that the need for the study up north is known and considered as part of the Tier Two process. The task force will hear that information. Those documents were sent over from county, I think about two months ago at this point, but that's the February discussion for the task force.
Are you trying to get the input from your Route 43, not you, but West Lynn's Route 43 corridor study, the implementation, things you wanna do, is that being put into this Route 43 Tier Two idea so that it's one big corridor? Because you had several recommendations in there to improve it.
Yeah, so the documentation that was sent over from the county, I believe, is mostly from the documentation from West Lynn.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We have a presentation regarding affordable housing. Commissioner Schrader, I assume you're involved in that?
Well, thank you, Mayor Stoudabaker and councilors. It's nice to be in my hometown and have an opportunity to speak in front of some very good friends tonight. I appreciate that. To my right is Stephen McMurtry. Did I say that right?
You did.
Okay, I practiced outside.
(laughing).
Who is actually head of our Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And I will hand over part of the presentation to him. I also want to mention in the audience tonight is the Director of our Human Resources Agency and Department, Richard Swift. I thank both of these gentlemen for being here and for their dedication and commitment to help us meet our affordable housing goals. So just to give you a little background, it's common knowledge that the county is in dire need of more affordable housing in all areas of Clackamas County, and this includes our cities as well as our unincorporated areas. Essentially, at this point in time, we have 41 percent of the affordable housing homes needed to meet our residents' needs. This includes family homes, apartments in the private market that do not have rent limits, and apartments with rent limits, which are usually regulated or generally regulated through affordable housing for lower-income families. So when you think of the population of Clackamas County that is over 400,000 and growing, and the fact that we're only meeting 41 percent of the need, you see the size and scale and scope of what we have ahead of us in order to get a supply for folks, to order to have decent housing in our county. And I will tell you today, the Commissioner spent most of our day talking about housing with about two large presentations. We have been grappling with this for a while. We are coming up with strategies such as public-private partnerships, develop new relationships and work with folks with jurisdictions like you. I know that you've done work with Northwest Housing Alternatives before, one of our premier nonprofit folks who we work with to make sure that we have an inventory. And we really are attempting to find innovative and sustainable strategies. And a big piece of this work is going to be try and finding ongoing revenue streams. We all know federal dollars are declining, and we need to find local solutions if we want to solve the housing crisis that we're facing. I know the state has stepped up to the plate, but I also want to thank our partners at Metro, because the Housing Bond funds will actually bring in just over $116 million in funding to create housing for some of our most vulnerable communities. And this bond will cost average Clackamas County homeowners about $60 per year over the next 30 years, which is based on an assessed home value of $250,000. It still isn't enough to fund what we need with what we are facing, not only in our county, but I can tell you this past year, as being President of the Statewide Association of Oregon Counties, there is not one part of the state, rural, urban, suburban, or frontier, that in one way, shape, or form is not facing a housing emergency. It is statewide, and indeed, I think you all know, it's also a national problem. So our Housing Authority will be releasing a notice of fund availability for the first phase of the bond funds by the end of this month. We have seven years to commit these funds, and project readiness is going to be a huge focus for us. And I know Steve will talk a little bit about some of the projects we already have in the pipeline that we're working very hard to pull together. We are looking forward to seeing the first round of proposals and our prioritized projects that can be completed quickly and get them going on the ground. The county has developed goals for these funds, and we are aligned with Metro's bond framework. So just with these few comments and knowing that all of, five of my colleagues are committed to really not only developing the affordable housing piece, but also the kinds of wraparound services that are necessary. Oftentimes, from our perspective, we talk about 60 percent and below of area median income. A lot of what we're doing now is trying to actually work with that 30 percent and below area median income of the most vulnerable, barrier populations. But we hope with our efforts that we'll have, and I know I've talked to John before and Teresa as well, about that continuum of housing needs and how we hope to address it. And I hope that the city, I know you as wonderful councilors and dedicated public servants will be helping us, I think, move forward with our agenda. So Steve, I'm handing it over to you, buddy.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask just one question?
Yes.
You said you were trying to do some innovative ways. One of the problems with housing is if the land is very expensive.
Exactly.
Have you ever considered, really in terms of this problem, expanding the urban growth boundary?
I think that is a conversation, from my perspective, we need to have at MPAC. One of the trends seems to be increased density as well. I think we need to balance this notion of increased density with a notion of people who do want single-family homes. That's just my personal opinion, but I do think that that's going to be coming up, thank goodness, in a way. I don't think it'll come up with me being chair again, so that'll be positive. But I know that working with Christine Lewis and the rest of the Metro councilors, at least, is something I think that we should take a close look at, because availability is a major issue. And your community in particular, I mean, and other communities throughout the state, it is the land costs. Anywhere from Sandy Estika can be, no matter what city you talk about in this county, and land prices can be prohibitive. So I hope I answered.
Quick question. Congratulations on getting that veterans' housing project done.
Thank you.
It's really great. I had a question from a veterans' family the other day about how many veterans are on the list to get into that kind of housing. Is it lots of people waiting? It's full now.
It's full already. It's full already, and essentially what has happened is because we did the project, the POD project, which is only temporary, kind of getting people stabilized, and that's actually, I want to say off close to Camp Withicam in that industrial area, we had county property that we decided that we would innovate. So we pulled together a cross-section of all our agencies to come up to talk about what it would be like to have a temporary project for veterans. It is actually the first project of that type that actually has met all the code issues that we need to meet. It's been very successful, and a number of folks from that transitional area actually transitioned into the housing in Oregon City. So that was tremendous. And that was a project with Northwest, I believe it was Northwest Housing Alternatives, correct?
Yes, it was.
And we will take ownership, I think, in the next few months, February or March, where the county will take that over, because I know I'm gonna be cooking a big lasagna dinner. You're all invited for the folks there. It's always been a high priority for us. I'm in the process of trying to reconnect with Camp Withicam. I used to know the generals and everyone else there. Given what's been happening nationally, it's time for us to reconnect, and I'm hopeful that part of that conversation will be what they can help add value and helping getting our veterans housed. So, all right, take it over, bud.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Commissioner Schrader, and thank you all to having us here this evening. I'm Stephen McMurtry with the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And as Commissioner Schrader mentioned, the county's implementation plan must be aligned with the core values laid out in Metro's bond framework, and that implementation plan that we're talking about is how we will utilize the $116.2 million that's coming for affordable housing development. A major piece of that framework is leading with racial equity. That's an important piece for Clackamas County, also for our cohort with Metro and our other colleagues in the metro area. And some examples of this may be minority business and workforce in the design and construction of housing. We'll put a big focus on formation of culturally-specific partnerships for outreach and services for the housing that's constructed and ongoing operations. Accessible tenant selection and screening criteria processes, so really putting a lot of emphasis on the management companies that are managing these units for long-term access to those who have been historically maybe marginalized in our community or haven't had direct access to housing. And ongoing reporting of outcomes. We're working with the state, Oregon Housing and Community Services, our state housing finance agency, as well as Metro and our other colleagues, to collect data and report on these units as they're constructed over time. That $116 million that I mentioned is there to purchase land, new land to build on. And Mayor, your comments about the high cost of land, that's something that we're gonna have to pay a lot of attention to as we're moving forward. Construction of new homes, so new units that have not been formerly deed-restricted or encumbered, and the purchase and/or renovation of existing housing to ensure long-term affordability. So we have the opportunity to get new units constructed in the marketplace or acquire buildings that may have been constructed and have yet to be leased up or are currently on what we'll call, you know, naturally occurring affordable housing. So there's opportunities throughout the county to look at properties like that that may be for sale, and we want to be able to capitalize on those resources. 55 percent of the bond resources are being set aside for the redevelopment of the Housing Authority's own public housing portfolio in three primary areas. We have 200-unit sites in the Oregon City area, and then a large site in Milwaukee that has 100 units and then 100-unit tower. If anybody's been through Milwaukee, it is the tallest building in Milwaukee, and I believe the tallest building in Clackamas County. We are actually not using bond resources on the tower that has been financed and is moving forward with the construction closing. They won't be using bond financing, and that construction closing will happen by April. But we're very excited about the opportunity to, you know, use these underutilized sites that have been historically our public housing units and bring new equity streams to them, bring new opportunities to those communities, and expand on those communities. So we're really excited about that. We also know that an estimated with our partners at Metro, $12 million will be coming to the county for acquisition of a site and redevelopment somewhere within the county, and so that will be coming forward soon. In the next week and a half, as Commissioner Schrader mentioned, next couple of weeks, we'll be releasing our first NOFA, a Notice of Funding Availability, for the first portion of our bond proceeds. We anticipate, or I know, that that's gonna be $40 million that we'll put out, available to anyone in the county within the urban growth boundary that has a viable project to move forward. Along with those $40 million, we will allocate up to 120 project-based vouchers or site-based rental assistance to go along with those units to help deeply affordable units. Now, the Housing Authority's primary charter is to work with those individuals that are at 0 to 30 percent of area median income, and that's a big focus of the bond resources as well. And so we really want to encourage our developments to create opportunities for varied incomes and varied income. and varied income levels in there, but also don't want to lose track of the fact that we have many, many people in our county that need that deep rental assistance at the 0% to 30%. So we have seven years to implement these bond funds, and so the, the clock is ticking. We've been working very hard for over a year to put all of these pieces together, to get the word out, and to encourage developers and our nonprofit partners to come forward. Northwest Housing Alternatives was mentioned, I have a special place in my heart for that firm, as their former housing director, so we're very excited about the work they do throughout the county. You know, the high-level goals that we're hoping to achieve, or I should say, our minimum goals that we're hoping to achieve with the Metro bond funds is 812 new units with these bond resources, making 406 units available to family-sized units of two-bedroom or larger to our struggling families within the county's urban growth boundary. We have a set aside that's been granted to us from Metro that 10% of the resources could be used to serve households between 61% and 80% of area median income. And so that's kind of exciting as we see that as housing costs continue to rise, but incomes stay relatively flat, we see more and more pressure on that upper level, and so this will give us an opportunity to get some of those units developed, maybe all the way up to the 80th percentile. And then at least 330 units, 333 units, excuse me, will be there for extremely low-income families earning 30% or less of area median income. So all of this is moving forward. And we've also left in our local implementation strategy, which is sort of our plan for how we will disperse bond funds throughout the county, open the door for first-time homebuyer opportunities, which is also an opportunity that Metro has put forward. We're still figuring out how that comes together, but we've had many conversations with those in the marketplace, both on the for-profit and nonprofit side, that do first-time homebuyer. And we think that there's a great opportunity to have synergy for many different types of housing in places like our public housing portfolio. For instance, in Milwaukee, where we've just completed a master planning process, where we know that we will greatly increase the number of units that was on our former public housing land and could have opportunities for up-to-market rate housing, all the way down to those that are earning basically 0% of area median income, and also sites for first-time homebuyer in there. So it's really exciting. As much as possible, the last couple of things here, as much as possible, we, we're looking for opportunities to incorporate supportive housing into our new developments. And basically, you know, there's been a lot of talk about that. Supportive housing is a housing-first model that provides housing as quickly as possible without requiring an agreement to, for the, for the user, end-user of that housing to participate in services. Services are voluntary, but there are supportive services that are available for those to participate in. And those are for long-term housing stability. Examples of that might be recovery from addiction, education opportunities, employment opportunities, they're all voluntary and are provided after housing is stabilized. So that's an exciting thing that we're working forward, and we're very happy at the housing authority that we were one of the first groups in the state to be given a grant to participate in a permanent supportive housing cohort with, with Oregon Housing and Community Services and some of our other colleagues to really work on getting this type of housing going as quickly as we can. And another big thing that we've all talked about and that we want to make sure is that there's choice. We find that the, the highest state of tenant stability happens when tenants, residents are connected to their communities and have opportunity throughout their communities to live in a variety of different housing types, which is why we really do want to emphasize housing being built throughout the urban growth boundary area within the county, and we are really encouraging developers and those jurisdictions that have sites that might be a good use for affordable housing to please come forward and start the conversation with us. We know there's a need for affordable housing in all areas of the county, and we want the opportunity for our residents to choose where they want to live, so.
Okay.
With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for having us.
You bet.
Thank you.
Next order of business is citizen comment. I've got Sandy Introvestigato. Sandy, would you tell me how to spell your last name? I can't read it very well.
Oh, sorry. I-N-T-R-A, V as in Victor, E-R-S-A-T-O.
Thank you.
Introvestigato.
On forward.
Okay. Well, good evening, thank you. I was here about a month ago to talk about Woodmont Park. Myself and a very large crew kind of took over council meeting, as you know, and we're After that meeting, we, we came with the intention of trying to have a, slow the process with Woodmont and have a dialogue, maybe get more of our neighbors involved. The next morning, we, I, personally, I didn't expect the outcome of just putting Woodmont on hold, and the next morning, some of my neighbors congratulated me, us, on our win, but it didn't really feel like a win, because number one, we still had no resolution really with Woodmont, an area park that we all love. And number two, I think the thing that bothered me the most is that there was a lot of fracture in relationships. I was on the other side of the aisle of Gary Willinghans, who's our Forest Highlands Neighborhood Association Chair. He and I have worked hand-in-hand on projects in our neighborhood. We are the reigning cornhole champions together. So it was really hard. And so Heidi and I, who, she and I are on the Parks Board together, and we also have a, we neighbors right by Woodmont, started thinking about what was next. And one of the things that we talked about was invasive species and like, how do we get those out? And I think what we really thought about is how can we just hype up our friends group and kind of get it going? And so we started, you know, kind of thinking about that, walking through the park. And one of the things that we realized, knowing what we do, working on the Parks Board, is that our other natural parks are Iron Mountain, and there are Springbrook and other natural areas, and they're really like as close to what it was supposed to be like. I mean, obviously, we've changed some things, but Woodmont is really an aging farm. And as we looked around, especially at the blackberries and some of the invasives, Heidi and I were like, we're going to need 100,000 people working for 100 years, and we're never going to get ahead of all the invasives. So we need another solution. So she and I both met with Ivan and talked a little bit more about what happened. Again, we have a long-term relationship with him. We realized the process is really complicated, and there are probably areas where we could have done a better job of communicating, but we got back together, myself, Gary, Scott Bullard, my cohort in the neighborhood and the Parks Board, Phil Zald, and Kirsten Gian, I'm going to, I'm going to brutalize her name. Anyway, the, the original committee, and talked about what's next. So in your council, many emails getting back to the year, you'll see a letter from us talking about what we have consensus on. And really what we're asking is you kind of unlock the Parks Department from talking to us and re-engaging. We really wanted to keep what the work that was done, build on it, see if we can, you know, re-engage with our community, get members, educate them more about what the opportunity is. Hopefully, all of us get more educated in the process, and then really just take advantage of the opportunity to do what's right for Woodmont in the long term. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Scott Bullard.
Well, thank you, counselors and mayor, and happy new year. I'm here as Forest Highlands Neighborhood Association co-chair technically with Gary, although we split things and he does take most of the load, I have to admit. He's the, he is the horsepower behind it all. But I'm also here to support what Sandy said, in, in, 100%, without any reservations. Woodmont Park has been a 22-year project, and we would like to see it unlocked. We don't want to see it in this last mile fall short of the goal line, that's all. And I want to thank you very much as a, as a council for listening to the concerns of individuals and taking those seriously and responding. That's important. And not worrying about where they live, you know, not worrying about the process and how long, what's invested in it, because those are serious, those are real concerns. People have to live there. And we really, we came together and discussed a lot of things, and it was, it was amazing how much common ground we had. And I think in talking to Ivan, I really hope that with some review, we're able to get this back on track and have some options that maybe weren't part of the first, first go-around and get this thing completed, because without completing it, there are requirements within the deed restrictions, and there is a trigger to go back to the family if we do not complete it. And I think 22 years, that's, that's, that's a good, good, a good amount of time for us to come up with some consensus. So unequivocal support for the team, and I know you have a very thick packet, it's in there, and I hope you all get a chance to read it, and we can get this restarted. So on a personal note, Stephen McMurtry and his presentation with affordable housing, I've known Stephen for 10-plus years. I have to say that under his watch, he is a subject matter expert, and I'm so, I hate that he left Northwest Housing, but I'm so happy he's there. And he's a subject matter expertise that can help us frame a project and get it integrated into the, into the Clackamas County plan, and at least would get the learning experience, whether or not it goes or not, you know, that, that's yet to be seen. But while there, he developed firsthand more than 2,000 units. And when he left and was snatched by Clackamas County, he had over 800 units in, in the pipeline, ready to go. And that veterans' housing project on Pleasant Street, that's all Stephen. And he really came up with the creative way to finance that. And the number-one population within veterans by percentage that are homeless are women with kids. And that was who made up the bulk of our, our residents that moved in. So it was a really wonderful project, and I hope we can do more. Thank you.
Question?
Next is Skip Armisby.
Oh, wait, question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess for council is, it's not on the agenda, but how can we consensus build to get it moving again? Is there a process that we need to do? Can we do it tonight?
Yeah, David, can we?
Why don't you put, I suggest you put this on for discussion at the end of your agenda so that you come back to it, and David and I at the break can have a little chat about what we can talk, what, what we can recommend to you.
Great.
As opposed to trying to solve this on the fly right now.
Totally. Thank you. Thank you, too. Thank you, Sandy.
Okay, I'm sorry, Skip Armisby.
Good evening, Lake Oswego City Council for 2020. My name is Charles Armisby. I go by the nickname Skip. I'm co-chair of the Birds Hill CPO on the northeast quadrant of Lake Oswego. A lot of things coming forward. A lot of things coming forward, I was making notes rapidly. My messy handwriting in the back is Christine Lewis was talking and whatnot about affordable housing. But the primary thing that's driven me here tonight is the schedule whatever for the citizen involvement guidelines. I think the process is abysmal, that's my most polite term for that, to have it going before the Planning Commission without the chairs reviewing these documents is frankly stupid. Next chair's meeting is on the 18th, the hearing, the work session for the Planning Commission's on the 15th. Go figure who set the schedule up. I've gotten the documents out to the chairs and so on and so forth. Basically, I consider what the Planning Department's done like not ethically discussing a pulse form. If you don't know what that is, that's where somebody has the power of life and death over you. I was, basically, my mother is in my hands, and I have made godlike decisions, not comfortable and not especially in applying to neighborhood planning processes and involvement. With respect to many of the items that Christine Lewis was mentioning, one of the big, about four projects I identified over the Christmas break from the J-PAC meeting, of two metro projects are extremely concerning. One, there is a redefinition of what is called the capacity ratio. Currently, there's, some people use the level of service, that hasn't been used for it since 2013. You'd better investigate it, you'd better know what's coming down. Second is the transfer of ODOT highways to local jurisdiction. This has been considered twice before. It's gone down in flames. Highway 43 is problematic for multiple reasons. Affordable housing issues, there needs to be accessibility for handicap. I'm on essentially a crusade in Clackamas County, I told that to the TriMet Board end of October. Basic things are just nomenclature, terms, so people can speak of the same language. That's all I'm after at this point. Maps would be a good thing. Again, I've mentioned to you is the use of Google Map Plus codes as a prime example in the old west, west-end building here in Lake Oswego. I could be delivered with my mother in a wheelchair, good luck getting picked up. Same thing happens with the Development Services Building in Clackamas County. Its address is 150 Beaver Creek Road, good luck getting picked up or getting somebody who's coming from Portland there. Transportation, use Google Map Plus codes. You can specify where things are, it needs to be done. Also, we need high-level maps to visualize the inner urban area, literally now from Kelso Longview all the way to the south side. I'm extremely concerned with the concepts of promulgated for high-speed rail. If you haven't looked at the topo maps around here, Oswego Lake north, north side, prox only by the Village Peoples area, I think two councils live in that area, down by the Hunt Club. North side of Oswego Lake is the only cut through without a tunnel in the West Hills. Start figuring. Be afraid. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next on our agenda is a public hearing. Mr. Powell, would you?
I will.
Get it started, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time set for a public hearing on ordinance 2863, excuse me, 2836, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lake Oswego amending LOC Article 24.02 transient lodging tax, requiring transient lodging intermediaries to register and collect and pay over transient room taxes and related amendments. Hearing's process is outlined in the agenda. It will begin with a staff report by the Finance Director, followed by public testimony. The time limits are three minutes per each individual testifying, followed by questions with staff, deliberations, and potentially a decision by the council.
Mr. Cross.
Good evening, Mayor.
I'm sorry, didn't you have to ask if anybody's biased or any of that kind of stuff?
I'm sorry?
Did you have to ask whether anybody was?
No, I was just going to say, it's not a land-use proceeding, so we don't need to make declarations, although conflicts of interest are always something to be declared if you have them, but otherwise, we're ready.
Well, so on this one, we can be as conflicted as we like.
You can have expert contacts and contacts and bias, but the conflict of interest part is always problematical.
Okay, thank you.
First, Martell.
Go ahead, Mr. Cross.
Good evening, Mayor, counselors. Sean Cross, Finance Director. This ordinance really is brought to you after ordinance 2815 was passed in July to change the code to basically say that the proprietor, the, the owner, the renter of the property is no longer, if they do not collect the funds, it's now the intermediary, such as a website or something like that. We'll do it to, to mirror what the state laws are. The main thing why we didn't do this before was with our five hotels, we didn't have any problems with the intermediaries wanting to pay us. But with the passage of ordinance 2815 allowing short-term rentals, the other intermediaries, other jurisdictions have had issues collecting with that. And so we have a roadmap of how to get them to do it, and the first thing is to get our, our code to mirror what the changes by the state were back in 2018.
Okay, so that's what we're.
Housekeeping.
Councilor Man, do you have a question?
Oh, no, did I hit my button? I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is a process to allow us to go after that, correct?
Yes, this will, I'll change our code, which will then direct the intermediaries to collect the tax to pay us directly. Right now, our code says the renter, or the rent, yeah, the, the owner collects it, no matter who collects the funds and pays us. So currently, we have 22 short-term rentals, and we've collected $0. But I think, I'm assuming most of it is probably collected by the intermediaries.
Okay, so.
So this, this will allow us to contact the intermediaries and get the process rolling to where we will now start collecting our transient lodging tax from them.
I'm going to get several questions on this.
Okay.
Councilwoman?
Is the. Is the, other jurisdictions that have enacted their policy to be conformance, are they able to collect, and will the third-party people actually pay us? Have we had good experience with that? So it's more housekeeping?
This is more of a housekeeping.
Okay.
Yeah. We have, we have a pretty clear roadmap. We have contacts at, such as Airbnb, to contact to do it once our code directs that they do it. So right now, our code doesn't direct that, so.
So updating the code will allow us to basically move forward, so it's great. Thank you.
I've read various articles that have said that Airbnb and VBR have not necessarily been forthcoming in telling you who the, who the renters are. Do you anticipate that problem?
I went to a conference in, in October, and one of the sessions I was. Um, I, I went to a conference in, in October and one of the sessions I was, was for short-term rentals and they used Corvallis, which is a small jurisdiction like us, and the city of Portland. And the process that both of them went through, Portland wanted the information. If Corvallis didn't, the amount of money and time spent by the city of Portland do such would be kind of productive to us. But there is also now, through the state, a data exchange where we should be able to get, I'm assuming, but I haven't contacted them yet, but to get some of the information that they are able to collect. The state isn't having a problem collecting. It's the local jurisdictions.
All right. Gotcha. Thank you. Counselor Lamont?
So I understand that, um, because I had a discussion with the executive at Airbnb recently, he was our former neighbor, and he said they're trying to clean up that whole collection thing. They realize it's something that cities are really concerned about, that not just getting the money, but knowing the list. But if we had a list already through our business licensing, we would know who had those. And if they didn't have it, then they would be punished for it or fined for it or whatever. So when you said 22, you knew that because they were getting licenses, is that right?
We have 22 licenses on.
Okay, and if somebody's operating without that, then we can address that right out of the box, we don't have to wait for a list from Airbnb, is that correct?
We wouldn't know.
Okay. So this money coming in, a, a couple of folks that have asked about this are confused. I think if we pass this tonight, we need to have a little outreach. Maybe you and Director Siegel for an hour, host some of the folks here to just explain the actual procedure and how it goes. I think they're concerned that the tax isn't being paid and they don't know what the mechanics are. But if all of a sudden the intermediaries are gonna do it for them, then we, we gotta get them to be up to speed, I think it'd be helpful.
Counselor Manes?
Well, I was just going to make a motion to move to enact 2836, if we're at that point.
We're not, we haven't had, we haven't asked the witnesses if they want to testify yet. But I'll get you going. Counselor Wynn?
Yeah, I just, I mean, it makes perfect sense to me, because it seems like the whole purpose of having intermediary, like in this case here Airbnb or one of these third parties is that they make it really easier for the homeowner to be able to rent out their, their room or their home and then still be in compliance. And so I think that as Counselor Lamont had mentioned, we have the mechanism of the business license. So I think there's some recourse. We, we somehow tie the, uh, the, the payment of the tax in showing that you're in compliance with the, with the new ordinance. So I think that we've got both pieces that are necessary with the, with the business license as well as, uh, you're basically making it so that we require the intermediary to collect the tax on behalf of the city. In this case here, like, like you mentioned, you think your example, hotel rooms, right? When we, when hotels book, um, when guests book hotel rooms, the, the tax is paid by the Travelocity or is that how it works?
Yeah, so currently with our five hotels, we've had no problem with the intermediaries paying. It's less than 10%, probably, but say 10% is paid by intermediaries. The other 90% currently is still collected through the hotels. But yeah.
We get it from both, the intermediary and the hotel.
So do you think the third party is? Do you think the third party is just holding it? Are they, are they taking it out of the, uh?
I think?
We don't know.
We don't, even know if they're charging it, if they're holding it, we don't.
Airbnb may not know that we have this new ordinance and that there's a tax on it. They may not, I don't know.
Yeah.
Get that up.
They know.
Yeah. All right, uh, any further questions? Is there anybody who wants to testify in favor of this? Anybody who wants to testify against it? Right? Not hearing any request for testimony, the hearing is closed. So now, do you want to make a motion?
I, I will. Move to enact ordinance 2836, amending LOC Article 24.02 to require transient lodging intermediaries to register, collect, and pay over transient room taxes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Cross. Next is Resolution 19-63. Special program for program management. I think you've talked to us about this before, haven't you?
Yes, we did. Thank you, Mayor, councilors. Thank you for having us back. You'll recall back in December, December 17th, we were before you for Resolution 19-63 to award an amendment to, and, and also to approve a special procurement for a contract amendment with Murray Smith and Associates for the pavement management program. And at that time, the, uh, during discussion of that hearing, uh, it was requested that we come back with a cost analysis comparing the cost of the construction management component to perhaps hiring, uh, city staff to do that work. So we've done that analysis, um, based on that information we provided you with the council report, but we also want to supplement it with a little bit of information here. So, um, tonight, uh, our Assistant City Engineer, Stefan Brodas, is going to, to make that presentation for you.
Thank you for having me. Um, as Erica just mentioned, I'm gonna be focusing on the cost analysis of the construction management piece of the pavement management program. Uh, and here is the cost breakdown for providing construction management services through our consultant, Murray Smith and Associates. Uh, these are the four major tasks for construction management over the next three years. The first is the Wembley Park Road Project, which is a major corridor project. And the other three are the annual paving programs for the next three years. Uh, the total proposed fee is about $1.7 million. To compare that with providing those same services in-house, we performed an estimate that would include the hiring of six equivalent staff, uh, which includes some construction engineers as well as construction inspectors and public outreach personnel. These six people would closely mirror the personnel level that was proposed to be provided by the consultant. Uh, and you can see there, the, um, total estimated cost to provide those same services in-house is about $3.5 million. And that's over that three-year period. So to summarize the two cost analysis, you have consultant construction management at about $1.7 million compared to in-house construction management at about $3.5 million. Uh, so the difference is about $1.8 million less by performing that through consultant construction management than by performing it in-house. And the reason for the cost difference is, is fairly straightforward. Uh, paving in our region is extremely seasonal and providing these resources with in-house staff, the costs remain constant throughout the year. Uh, so we would expect to, um, have lower costs during the summer, during the paving, but in the off-seasons when, uh, planning and design work is going on, but very little construction is going on, uh, our cost to perform these services in-house would remain linear and constant, whereas our fees that we would pay to a consultant at that time would be much, much lower. And so with that, uh, our recommendation is to approve Resolution 19-63.
And make a motion, we approve Resolution 19-63. For a second?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion, Counselor Lamont?
Yes, let's, let's, uh, let's rewind the movie here a little bit. Okay, so I, I understand from our city manager that Murray Smith is doing a great job and that's good news. I understand that they also have in the original budget, the design and engineering, and we know we have to do that in-house at all times. Most cities have to do that. So we took that out and now we're down to construction management. And this is where we are trying to get a handle on, not pushing FTEs, not pushing any trouble for the department, it's to make things better and save some money. So I looked at, if you go back three or four slides to the chart, that, that chart, and I'm like, what, what are we talking here? So I hear that there's six people under construction management, project managers, so I need to understand what that is and what Joel Comerica's doing. Civil engineers, and what are they doing if the construction inspectors are inspecting the, the concrete and the rebar? Geotech engineers, I thought would be under design. And the last one, public information specialists, and we have Diana, Bonnie, and Katie out in the field. I, I stood out with her the other day when I was going to the post office and she explained how she went day-to-day, door-to-door to the, to the businesses that she coordinated our, our news blasts. So why are six people needed to inspect concrete and rebar? So that's the first question. The second question, you look at that map, office space at 51,900, half this floor is empty with computers sitting there. So why would we need office space? Now, I understand two engineers just left from this floor to went out on the field in Boone's Ferry and we had to get space, but whether it's a construction sta-, a trailer or space, we would have 51,000 estimated here in office space when we have half a floor in city hall. And then the next question is the salary. So you got it up to $3.2 million for six people. I divided it by $140,000 fully-loaded salary for a mid-level engineer and I got 23 people. Then I divided by the three years, I got seven and a half people. Does it take seven and a half people to look at the slurry on the street, which we had trouble with in this last one? I, I, I'm just confused at what we're doing here. If the message was, I think when Counselor Wynn was asking staff, are you just trying to kill this one project? Just kill it, don't come back with these numbers, that don't make any sense to me. So what are we really doing here? If we're overloaded in that department and you've, Director Rooney has said to me that you could use two in-house inspecting engineers and you could control them better. Murray Smith is good, they're doing a great job, designing engineering has to be done in-house, but six, seven people at $3.25 million and all these people involved in inspecting concrete and rebar. So where are we with this? This is totally confusing. It didn't give me a good cost benefit. What did you use for your fully-loaded salaries? How many people are involved? That, that's what I'd like to know.
Sure, sure. So for the fully-loaded salaries, I assumed these positions would be brought in at mid-grade. Basically, for all the assumptions that I tried to make in the cost estimate, I tried to use low-end range, uh, which is a bit aggressive, um, but I, I, I didn't want to look like we were sandbagging this estimate. Um, for the personnel, we show six people. At the peak times during construction, Murray Smith will actually have eight full-time people assigned to this project. Again, that's in the high peak of this, so I pulled that back down to six, uh, which I felt we could probably stretch to make work.
But, but before you jump to the other, so why, why that many peoples, including a public information specialist?
So if you look at, if you, you might recall, we don't have it here, but if you look at how much work we're going to be doing this summer, you're gonna need six to eight people spread out throughout the city to manage slurry seal operations and paving operations. It's going to be not just one location, but up to six to seven locations in any one day.
Right.
So that's why the six to eight people is, it's the sheer magnitude of what we're doing and it's not one site. It's the entire.
No, I get that. The list is long, I get that, and we're doing good getting our pavement going.
Right, so you can't have paving going on over here without an inspector. If you've got six or seven fronts going at one time, you may need to have six or seven people on-site to do that work.
Including public information specialists?
Well, so we actually are having a very robust conversation about public information system. One, Katie's already on Boone's Ferry Road full-time, so she's not even available, but she can provide some advice. But we're actually gonna have, um, kind of like a, what do you call it, um, a SWAT team approach with it this summer, because it's going to be so significant, how many roads we're gonna have closed for slurry seals, and those are closed for the whole day, the number of calls we anticipate getting. It could be full-time during the summer months when we're paving.
And we're paying the consultant for that?
Yes.
And, and Bonnie, Diana, and Katie can't handle?
They have other things on their plates, they can't handle it full-time.
And the PMs, what is Joel doing with this whole program?
So Joel's not a part of any of this. This is, this is not.
What is Joel doing?
That's, this is just the construction aspect that we talked about. Joel is advisory, but when it's actually activity level in the field, Joel's not in the field. He's there if something really bad goes wrong, but his role in that is, is minimal during, during construction, he's not out in the field. So that's not part of this estimate, it doesn't have that component in it.
Not Joel specifically. It doesn't, it does include an engineer for essentially project management tasks. It's scheduling contractors, it's coordinating various pieces, it's obtaining permits, it's processing change orders, it's, uh.
That's what he's doing?
No, that's what the consultants do.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, I didn't mean that. And what about the salaries?
And so the 2.4, talk about how the 2.4.
Well, there's a multiplier on all the salaries, the loaded salaries. So all of these salaries were taken from the Lumia contract at mid-range multiplied with the loaded rate.
We have a multiplier of 2.4, so I don't know where you got the 140 from, but 2.4 is what we use for overhead, benefits, and everything else associated with that. That's what we use consistently throughout the city. So if somebody's gross salary is $60,000 a year, you multiply that by 2.4, because that's the real cost for administrative overhead benefits.
Even hers itself is 20%, so.
Right.
I, to.
Okay, uh, Counselor Kohlhoff, you have a question?
Did I understand you right? That makes no sense to me at all. So you're saying a person who earns $60,000 is calculated at $144,000 as the, what, 2.4? Did I do my math right?
That's about right. Yes.
Okay, I, I'm with Counselor Lamont on this. And I guess I, I truly do understand what you're talking about, the surge and the capacity you have somebody available, like rent a engineer, um, and that's all set up, but I'm struggling with these numbers. And I think that the other piece that is bothersome to me is that, um, you're, you're paying for basically six months' worth of work. And I get it that you may say those people that we hired in-house to do this may not be skilled at something else, you know, during the other six months, but, um, I just, I'm just not seeing this justified, but.
All right, Counselor Wynn?
So I, I just want to be clear, if we pass this resolution, we're approving a contract for $3.8 million, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess I'm asking the question, if you're adding six people on staff to do the, this work, um, at $3,267,000, that's $544,533 per person. Okay? Go back to your, what?
Three years. So divided by three.
Divided by three. So you're, you're still talking, divided by three, $182,000 a person.
Instead of 144, right?
But if we're, we're approving a contract for 3.8, I, I mean, I, I guess it just doesn't add up to me either in the sense of having a, um, if they're only part-time as well, we're only using them during the summer and some people during half the year. And would you say, I mean, they're not, we're not approving a contract for them to be working 12 months for the next three years. Is that correct?
What we get with, with consultants, be it this project or any other, is a lot of flexibility. So as the project progresses from design into construction into inspection, they bring on different people. And so they start out with design engineers, whose role is very high at first and no construction, and then the construction managers come onboard, uh, kind of almost near the end, and their role increases and the designers decreases, and the designer practically almost goes away during, during construction, because the construction manager and inspectors take over. So you're ebbing and flowing with the people and they have the ability to bring on people more readily than we do and, and assign them, okay, for these six months, you're gonna be out in the field, but in the next six months, they'll send them over to some other project in, in Bend or something to work on. They have that kind of flexibility so that they're not spending 12 months, uh, at full-time on, on our job, not any one person.
Okay, but then you're, the contract is for $3.8 million. So if they're only working half-time, then, I mean, I, I guess what I'm looking at is, we're looking at 3.3 million if we hire in-house and 3.8 million per contract. Is that correct?
So the, the proposed amendment is $3.8 million, but includes more than just construction management. The piece that we are doing the cost analysis on is just the construction management. So the consultant's component of that $3.8 million amendment is only 1.7 for construction management. So it's, it's three and a half in-house versus 1.7 via the construction manager from a consultant.
So what makes up the difference between 3. So what makes up the difference between three point eight and one point seven?
The difference is going to be design. It's gonna be a-
That we would have to pay for either way.
Right.
Okay.
Counselor Lamott?
Sorry, um, a lot of the conversation that I've heard is around, um, slurry seal. So if you could con- confirm for me, what percentage of this work that we're talking about is slurry seal because it's wrapped in with, um, uh, construction, the actual construction, knowing that slurry seal is a totally different process that I would say would be what? A tier-one kind of street process as opposed to a high-level street process or maybe flip it over. So what percentage of this work that's going to be done over the next three years is slurry seal? And I'm getting to something here.
Do you mean percentage by staff time or percentage by cost?
A percentage by, by total work.
Well, probably total miles-wise, I'm gonna say it's almost half and half for twenty-twenty. If you just go-
How much?
Miles-wise, as far as, you know, street lane mileage, I'm just thinking of the, the visual in my head about the map, and I would say we're doing about, half the work is gonna be paving and half the work's gonna be slurry next year. That's, that's twenty-twenty, we haven't got twenty-one and twenty-two figured out yet. And it could be a little bit higher on paving the second year, we're not sure.
Then my second part is, having worked on the water partnership, um, and seeing the reports that we received from our, um, our company, the Murray Hill equivalent, uh, we would get reports and it would talk about each aspect of the project, whatever it may be, with a breakdown of costs, um, and a punch list of where we're at and what we're doing. Do we have something like that provided by Murray Seal as our project manager, an engineering firm and?
Yes, so we get, once construction is, is active, we get weekly progress meetings that include, uh, extremely detailed minutes-
Right.
Extremely detailed schedule, extremely detailed, um-
Timelines and-
Punch lists.
Punch lists, the whole nine yards.
Yep, detailed reports every week.
And, and we have a very sophisticated, uh, record-keeping system that we have set up with them. We spent a lot of time, uh, the first six, nine months with Murray Smith, developing how are we going to, how are they gonna do the work, collect it, keep the records so that we can also look at it at any time? We can look up the punch list at any time that we want to, we, we go to some of the meetings even. Um, so that we have all of those and then we can also archive them in a manner that is going to work for us long-term. So that I can go back in ten years and pull up that project and find all the information I need, just like if we had done it ourselves.
So the reason why I ask this is, would this be useful if we approved this contract to have that information for year one for the coun- for council to, to look at, a link on a page or something to that effect, uh, where they can see for each project how much is being spent and the progress and so on and so forth? Would that be useful or?
So we do, we, we certainly can provide all of that, um, we do track it by each kind of task, if you will, so-
Right.
Summer's paid-
Be a lot of detail, I get that.
We have a lot of detail, but it's like a lot of-
I get that.
Spreadsheets and stuff, and we could certainly provide that if you'd like.
If, if that would-
Yeah.
Make a difference, I don't know if it would or not.
It's actually the cost, you bet, we've got that.
Thank you.
Counselor Wynn?
You know, I'm just, um, kind of unfamiliar with how these, uh, these types of contracts work and so, so we've got, on the one hand, we're awarding the actual paving of these streets and these slurry seals and all this work that's getting done, the physical work done by the, the contractors, right? And so this project management, is this, is that what the city's doing to inspect, to make sure that everything's done per, per code, per, um, is, is that what the project manager's doing or is, um, I'm just kind of unfamiliar why, with why we have, you know, we've got a contractor that's supposed to, to do the actual work, why aren't some of this, is why some of this already rolled into some of their original contract? I mean, I, I mean, my second question I would have too is, what is the total project cost and what percentage of this project management consulting work is it in relation to the whole project cost?
So the contractor can't do anything without a set of plans and specifications. They're not going, they have to have something to bid on. So if you back that up, that is what the project management team does, is they come up with the plans and the specifications. If you back up from there, they have to figure out what streets are we going to do? And that is determinative. You may recall, we came, um, last fall with, again, an update to our, every three years we do a, a, a street assessment and we give you the pavement condition index and we say this is what it is on local streets and on arterials and on collectors, all of that, and we say that the PCI overall is sixty-eight or sixty-nine, whatever it was this, this time around. That information has to be collected, managed, and from that, that's how they determine what roads are we going to do. And it's, it's an iterative process. It's not easy to go through and say, uh, you can't just pick all the streets that are, are eighty and, and below, you have to do it in a methodical manner and you have all these other, um, issues that, that have to be discussed, such as the dig-one policy. Oh, are we doing wastewater project over here, maybe we should pave that or maybe we should push that project out? You're constantly going through an iterative process to come up with the list for twenty-twenty, let's say. Um, I don't know how many times we went through that list and modified it because of this or that or development is happening or will be happening or Boone's Ferry Road is in the way, let's not go in that area and mess that up with any other paving at the moment, let's wait till that's done. All these things, they manage all of that juggling and then eventually get to finally putting together a set of plans and specifications that end up pretty thick. Over the past, um, two and a half years, we have spent, um, approximately eleven million dollars, of which about twenty-five percent of that has been on project management. And that is very traditional ratios. Um, again, I don't have those numbers perfect, but I remember looking this up a little while ago, it's like, so far, we've spent about eleven million and that includes the construction. Um, and a twenty-five percent ratio for planning and, uh, pl- plans and spec development is very typical on construction projects. So they're not out of line, they're right in where we would expect it to be. The overall, I think the project is going to be spending, um, close to forty million dollars when we get done for, you know, five, six years' worth of pavement. Um, and that was the goal when we said we wanted to get the PCI, um, up to seventy and we also went through the effort of, uh, bonding the, um, House Bill twenty-seventeen funds, bonding that so that we could get it earlier and, uh, or use those funds earlier and be able to hit the ground running, if you will, and put that forward amount of money early into the process so that we could work on the PCI. So their job is to do all of that front-end work along with creating the plans and specs so that a contractor can put them, uh, excuse me, can bid towards that. Um, one thing we get with having the Murray Smith here and having it consistent from year to year is we get consistent set of plans, consistent set of specs, makes it easier for the contracting environment to go, oh yeah, let us we go, they did it last year, we know what to expect, it's gonna be the same set of plans and specs and it makes it easier for them to bid as well. So there's a, a bonus to that consistency that we get.
So then the, the contractors aren't, at this point, they're not selected yet, so-
Not at all, it hasn't been advertised, but we are planning to advertise both slurry and the paving in the next four to six weeks and so that we can get out there and get some of this work started.
Counselor Lamott?
I, I have a couple more questions, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to understand more how this works and so, so you've got the, um, you know, so the, the, the work has not been awarded yet, so you're, at this point, you're, you're coming up with plans so that the contractors can bid that work and can complete the work? So then, does it ever hap- does it ever happen that, um, that you've identified these projects, a list of, you know, a dozen or so projects here and you put these out to bid and have a design, you know, a, a design build type situation where, I'm sure with these larger firms, I mean, like these large, um, paving firms, they've got the engineering capability to do some of this work, can they, can they do that? Can they, can we identify some projects where, you know, in this stretch of road, this is what we need to get done? Can you, can you, um, a co- a paving contractor come up with a design, the engineering for that? Has that ever happened?
Um, I'm not aware of too many truly big paving companies that do design build for paving jobs, they certainly do for-
You don't typically do that for roads, you might do it for a complicated building or-
Or maybe a bridge.
Or a water treatment plant.
Yeah, or maybe a bridge, I've seen it.
But you wouldn't typically, this is a pretty straightforward-
Yeah.
-project.
I see, it just seemed like a, a twenty-five percent premium on top of the actual cost of the, of the work is, is pretty hefty. I know that that's in line with other projects, but I, I hope that we would aspire to be more efficient with, uh, with resources than settling for twenty-five percent as, you know, is acceptable, so.
Are you, are you done with your question? Counselor Lamott, you have a question?
Okay, two quick questions. One is, if I got you right in answering Counselor Manz, you said that the slurry seal program would be about fifty percent of the work, is that correct?
I think so for this year, just thinking about what the map looks like.
So I think most of us, if not all of us, love the slurry seal program because you've convinced us that it helps buy more years out of our roads, especially when they're just slightly cracked or pocked. Um, and we went through the first one, which was pretty well-done and there was some sloppy stuff that needed to be done, it's getting better and better. So I understand we have to watch it, somebody's gotta get out there and say you did a good job or you really messed it up, you gotta redo it. But if I got this right, at one point seven million for them to do the construction management, when you add up that, that line, and if half the work is slurry, following Counselor Manz's question, it's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're spending on somebody to inspect slurry, which is just a topical. So why do we need all these other folks and eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for three years? So that's the question, I'm like, what are they doing inspecting just slurry? If we do half the program is slurry? And it's a cool program, I love it, but.
I, I think one thing that's important to note with the slurry is it's extremely intense as far as the public outreach goes. So a road, when slurry is being installed, is completely inaccessible.
Right.
And so from the start of it in the morning until it has proper time to cure, you can't get in or out of your driveway.
Right.
And so it is the next level as far as public outreach goes. It's not, we're going to be here at some point next week and we'll keep you updated and call this number, it's really hand-holding every single driveway that's going to get paved that day and coordinating with them, uh, basically getting in and out of their house and setting up appropriate times and alternative routes and everything like that. And that's, they're going to be doing just this summer, probably one or two segments a day, if not more. Uh, and so it adds up very quickly just on the public involvement side. Um, and then in the inspection part, uh, you know, at that rate, they're also getting, uh, quite a bit accomplished every day, so, uh, with slurry, there's still a, a set of specifications and a set of tests and a set of, all of those things that the inspector has to stay on top of and make sure that they're submitted and in compliance with, with all the specs.
But, but that sounds like a paperwork thing, 'cause to me, slurry is so basic, it's putting the coating on and they're making sure it's done right.
There, it's very tight tolerances on the application rate to make sure that they're applying the right amount, not too little, not too much.
Yeah.
Uh, and so they have to stay monitoring on that, it's, it's a babysitting job.
It, to be, to be honest, our experience is, it's ten times more involvement, public involvement with a slurry than it is with a paving job. That's been our experience, it's intense. And it's, it's, it, the inspector has to be out there to, to help with that, with the coordinating of it, but also the calls that come in from it are, are extensive. And so it's, may look like it's simple pa- painting, but it's, actually, the coordination part of it is really difficult.
And the last question for me, and it's a bigger picture, is this is something former manager Lesbey mentioned when we finally had our discussion and that there might be five years' worth of work. Well, you had mentioned in here that what do we do with everybody at the end of the program? So to me, if there's no work for anybody in the public sector, they get laid off, they're done. I mean, it's the same thing I've run across planning departments across country, there's no building, there's no action, you don't need fifty people there, you might need thirty. But then I look at it and I go, wait a minute, this program isn't gonna go off the cliff in three or four years, we're gonna continue on and on with roads and paving to make sure that we are covering the city forever. So did we look long-range to see in-house versus out-of-house? And, and when, when, uh, former manager Lesbey mentioned, I said, okay, now we're having a real discussion. It's not a one-shot, one-hit wonder, it's a longer-term paving program.
So let's be really clear, the, the level of money available to do paving is not, not forever. We are in a blip and then when this program is over, we go back down to the pre-program levels, which are more like around two million a year instead of seven to nine. It's a very significant drop, we'll drop back down to where we were prior to that. So we won't be doing it at this rate. We're doing this large blitz right now to get it up to seventy, but we're not going to maintain that level of paving in perpetuity.
With the money coming.
No, not at all, because the money is only finite. Um, this, this influx that we get by doing the bonding ahead of time is only, is, is finite.
Okay, we have, Counselor Kohlhoff, I guess you have a question?
Well, this is the last question I'll have, but the, but you can in-house have a job that lasts three years. You could hire in-house-
Yes.
For three years.
Yes, and then lay off. Yes, and we, and, and that's, that, we talked about that in the report, that you can do that, we could lay them off. Um, we ended, just identified a little bit about what the potential costs are associated with that as well. You know, you have to pay for, um, health benefits and things like that for any layoffs, but, yeah.
Hey, we have a motion that's been made and seconded, any discussion, any further discussion? Seems to me that, uh, you're talking about spending, for the same job, you're talking about spending half as much if we go with this proposal, right? I just find it hard, it's difficult to justify spending twice as much to do it in-house, this particular thing, but that's me. Any other comments?
So the difference then on the design, if we had in-house people that were construction management, then, uh, the three point eight million includes for the, for the contract, all the design work?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Manz?
One concern that I, excuse me, uh, one concern that I have is, um, and I want us all to think of this, regardless of the financial implications, when we set this program up, we, we had a timeframe for it. If we go to a different plan at this moment, we're probably between recruiting and getting people on-boarded and up to speed, and tell me if I'm wrong on this, going to push out the project another year and miss our window of oper- or at least miss our early window of opportunity, uh, to get this started so that we hit our goal, so that we can bump it back down. Um, would that be a reasonable assumption on my part if we were to go totally in-house?
Uh, yes, that's actually very, very accurate, I would expect it, uh, to take us a year to get together a construction management team of, of six, five to six people. Um, the, the, um, the employment situation right now is very difficult, I can barely get any engineers for the positions that we do have open that have come open in the last couple of years. So, um, and construction is so busy and they're paying such high premiums out there in the private sector that it's very hard for us to get bodies. So I would think a year delay is very plausible. We certainly wouldn't be able to do this summer during the way.
We have six months to go.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, it's Counselor-
No, it's, yeah.
Did you have anything more?
Well, I just, I, I wanted to say, you know, there's two factors here and I agree, I, you know, I find paying the money for the slurry seal to have someone oversee, that seems excessive to me, but then we would have an opportunity cost if we were to delay our work another year, meaning other costs would certainly go up, I would imagine, unless we had a deep recession. Um, so in this deliberation, I simply wanted to throw that out, there is something to be considered.
Counselor Wynn?
Yeah, I think, I, I agree with that, I, Counselor Manz's point, I think at this point, because we did, we've already kind of gone down that path of, of this path already for us to reverse course and go back, but I'd like to see in future projects, I think that, you know, we, we talked about the design build being uncommon, but I'm reading more and more that, you know, currently our, our process, the design bid-build, right? So we've got, we've got three steps here, but I would like to see potentially in future projects, if we can kind of potentially explore that as an option, that maybe we were, maybe on other projects, explore that option, design bill, is there cost savings there if we're able to put the onus of, uh, actually designing and the engineering of the, whatever project we're doing onto the general contractor versus us having s- city staff, city, um, employees working on the design? So I, I, I mean, um, I think if, if I'm understanding, uh, Counselor Manz, um, I'm, would be more leaning to, is at this point, because we're down this path so far and for us to reverse course, as you had said, we'd waste a year, so I think that would be, um, in that case, I would probably reconsider and.
Yeah, I'd-
Counselor Lamott?
The, uh, joint contract of design and engineering and construction, so if this is done and Murray Smith goes ahead, they've got roughly four, five, six months to get Murray Smith goes ahead, they've got roughly four, five, six months to get the design and engineering done for the next round, or is that already done?
They're at 90, 90 to 100% almost on for the summer.
So that chunk of the three-something is just to get it to the 100% for design and engineering. Is that correct?
It's for the whole package. It's, yes, for the whole package. The 3.8 is to extend what they've already got right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is in the next couple of months, they finalize it, then we get ready for spring bid.
And Wembley Park and all of this, yes.
You know, I'm, I'm sure you can tell I'm having a hard time with this, really, because we had this conversation a year ago in our goal setting for protocol, that your department, not so much the others, would give us this construction, I mean, this simple cost-benefit analysis, to help us make better form decisions. And if we could save 500, 250, 500, a million or 2 million, on the bigger picture, what we're doing in the city, to put into the roads and paths and trails and safe routes, that would be great. So we're not trying to push one or the other. We just need to make sure that this gets done, so we don't have to chase it, and then it's last minute. So that was a protocol discussion that this council had a year ago, and it didn't get done for this. So I'm hoping in the future, as Council Winn and Councilman Mans say, it gets done. Now, when you came back with that south area of the lake with the sewer inspector, inspection, and asked us to approve a contract, fine, you had a cost benefit in there. Say, this is so on-call that we couldn't get someone full-time on, that's all we needed. So I don't want to be chasing and chasing when we have work coming down the road. Even if our funding level drops to 2 million, we're still going to be doing slurry, and maybe there's a slurry guy out there that we could bring on. But just, this is sincere. You can tell from the discussion that we're sincerely questioning some of this stuff. And I know that you are always overloaded. So we've just got to work better as a team to make sure we look at these things. That's all.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, I feel kind of like, between the bookends on this issue, that time is of relevance. I know you're short-staffed. I don't think we really have a choice other than to go, move forward, because we need to have this done. But I would like to maybe have a, in future, big contracts and whatever, I guess, more of a flight plan of us getting on, so we can be supportive of you instead of challenging, if that makes sense. We just need a, I think, a longer glide path as you're going through the process on, on big-ticket items. That would help us, because we're, we have expertise in many fields. Engineering is not one of any of ours, that may be for Skip that knows a little bit more than other people. So, anyway, I say, call the question.
That's exactly what I was going to do. Thank you.
Good.
See, I told you I'd help you out.
Oh, boy, you're, it just amazes me.
Lord have mercy.
Go, call the roll.
Okay, the motion you're voting on is to adopt Resolution 1963.
That's correct.
Mayor Stoudamire.
Yes.
And Councilor Mans?
Yes.
Kohoff?
Yes.
Winn?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Lamont?
Yes.
And Wyman?
Unanimous, yes.
Unanimous, thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. But a word to the wise is sufficient, as the nuns used to say to us.
A word to the wise, okay.
Mayors members of the council, good evening. We have two annexations before us. The first one is, is located at the north side of Carmen Drive, at the intersection of Shakespeare Street and Parker Road. Oh, yeah. And it's at 5995 Carmen Drive. It's approximately 4.44 acres in size, and it's located on the north side of Carmen Drive. The sewer is available on the northeast side of the property, at the intersection of Carmen Drive, Parker Road, and Shakespeare. It would be available to serve the existing single-family dwelling. If the property were to divide, the sewer would need to come from the north or the west side of the property along Carmen Drive. Our second annexation is at 6244 Washington Court. It's on, located on the south side of Washington Court. It's approximately 1.7 acres in size. It consists of three tax lots and the adjacent right-of-way. Tax Lot 400 is occupied by a single-family dwelling that takes access from Washington Court, and Tax Lots 500 and 600 are vacant. We also found that utilities, as well as sewer, are available to serve this site and can also be annexed. I'm open for any questions you might have.
Questions, anybody?
I move to enact Ordinance 2834.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Right.
If you go back to the map of that one, that's on Carmen, so 6030, the parcel there, that's already in the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so this is the classic cherry stem or dog leg that really isn't efficient, but it's already in here. So we're adding to the dog leg by picking up the triangle 5995, is that correct?
Well, that's the only way we can annex the property, is by determining that that's contiguous to 6030.
So we're taking care of Shakespeare up to that house until hopefully someone else comes in besides this. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Yes.
Move to enact Ordinance 2835.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Espy. Next item is, item 8.4, Compliance with State Plastic Bag Laws.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a presentation, so you just get to look at me. As I'm sure you remember, because it was not that long ago, we passed our own Ordinance 2806 to enact a plastic bag ban in Lake Oswego with a 10-cent bag fee. And it was such a great ordinance that the state copied it, like a month later. So since that ordinance passed on July 1st, we required all retailers 10,000 square feet and larger to not use any plastic bags, and then charge 10 cents for all of the paper bags that they were using. And then on January 1 of 2020, all of the retailers and restaurants smaller than 10,000 square feet were brought into it, and it was optional for them to charge 10 cents for a paper bag. At the same time, as luck would have it, the state law came into effect, requiring everybody to charge 5 cents for a paper bag. So as you can imagine, there's been a lot of confusion. We sent out letters to about 230 businesses in Lake Oswego, which I thought would help. Turned out to be clear as mud, and I came back from Christmas with a million voicemails with nobody knowing what they should be doing. So we need to do something. And so I got in touch with all of the other cities in the state who have had plastic bag bans, to find out what everybody else is doing. And there was, there only, there's only one other city in the state that had a 10-cent fee. Everybody else had a 5-cent fee, so it wasn't that big of a deal. And that, the only other city was Ashland. And they're kind of like, we don't know, but we'll probably go back, go down to 5 cents. We are required by the state to adopt all of the same definitions and requirements that are in the state law. So they, you know, have basically preempted all of the local laws that were in effect. We have a little bit of leeway on two things. One is the fee that we charge. It has to be a minimum of 5 cents, but we can go higher if we want. And the other is enforcement penalties. But right now, our retailers are just extremely confused, and I really don't blame them. And I went to Safeway today, I'm pretty sure they're charging 5 cents anyway, because they're required to by the state, and I think that makes sense to them. So basically, I've given you three options to direct staff to do one of three things. The first would be to repeal Lake Oswego Code Chapter 26, which would remove all of our plastic bag provisions from the city code, and essentially every, we would just, everybody in Lake Oswego would just go by the state law. The second option would be to amend Chapter 26 to include identical definitions, restrictions, and requirements that were in House Bill 2509. And we can keep our 10-cent bag fee. And then the third option, which is sort of functionally similar as the first option, except it does keep wording in our own code, would be to amend it to include the identical definitions, restrictions, and requirements as the state law, but reduce the bag fee to 5 cents. So I know my recommendation was to keep the 10-cent bag fee. And since writing this, I've had so many phone calls from confused retailers that I don't really think that's in the best interests of the community. And I know, you know, it's very compelling. The 10-cent bag fee does change behavior a lot more than a 5-cent bag fee does on the consumer's side of it. But keeping in mind that we do have a number of retailers who operate in multiple jurisdictions, New Seasons is already kind of like, tell us what we should do. How many buttons do we have to add to our system? I can understand that confusion, and I'm sympathetic to that reasoning. So I think that my recommendation would be that we amend Chapter 26, so that we still have our own language. It allows us to go back in the future. We can change the penalties if we want to go have different penalties than what the state is asking for. If we want to change the bag fee at a future date, we can still do that. If we repeal it, we don't really have that option anymore. So I think that is my recommendation.
Is it number two?
Three.
So number three.
Three.
Yeah.
But keep the thing at 10.
No, I suggest keep bringing the fee down to 5. Yeah. Yep. And I know I loved the 10 cents, but we would be the only community in the state with a 10-cent fee. And that is hard for retailers, I think.
I need the motion that we adopt. Well, first of all, questions, questions.
I do have it.
All the way over from the corner. Doesn't show up over there.
How many express you can send over here, Mary?
I got you.
I guess I, I would vote for two.
Yep.
Because we spent some time talking about this, and I think the behavior is changing, and that's what we want. I'd hate to say, well, we weren't really sure if 10 was the right, but I'm not a big supporter of the people in Salem. I don't always think they make the right decisions. And they, we could all find out that in six months, they want to move it to 10, because 5 doesn't change behavior. So why don't we do like we did back in July, and be leaders, and just stay with the right program?
I'm so glad that you can say what I didn't feel like I could say.
Well, and I don't, I don't think retailers that are calling you, they have computer systems. If you go into any one of those stores, you see the 10 cent right up there if you say you want a bag. So it's already in their system. They don't have to change anything.
So I guess my, my big question really, though, is that in our ordinance, so the 10-cent fee was mandatory for retailers larger than 10,000 square feet, which I believe is seven stores, but the large majority of bag producers. Everybody else who's smaller than that is now required by the state to charge the 5 cents, whereas under our ordinance, they could, they could charge a 10-cent fee, and it was optional. So we would have kind of a two-tiered structure, which is a little complicated. I'm not saying that it's wrong, but.
You said not, but everyone except for restaurants, right? Restaurants except for the plastic bags, right? The reusable plastic bags.
Right, that's correct, yeah.
Can you clarify that one more time, because I'm a restaurateur.
Yeah. That is confusing. So, so in Lake Oswego, under, under the ordinance that we passed, a restaurant would be allowed to charge 10 cents for a paper bag. Under the state law.
But not required, though, right?
Right. So under the state law, they do not have to charge for a paper bag, but they do have to charge for a reusable paper, plastic bag, which is a plastic bag that's thicker than four mils.
Councilman Mans?
Well, gosh, I want to leave it at, I concur with Councilor O'Neill. And HB 2509, I have some problems with, you know, how many people really know how thick four mil is in plastic, unless they've worked in plastics or ordered plastics. So how do we enforce a four-mil issue? But I would say, I'm, I'm going to have to go with two, because we have been leaders. And as we've seen with the bottled bill recently going from 5 to 10 cents, 5 cents is not going to change behavior. Our behavior has changed.
Right.
We have been successful in, in changing behavior. And in Zurich, it's 30 cents. So, you know, I, I think we're, we're providing our citizens and the region a form of leadership.
Do we want then 10 cents? I guess I need to ask David about this, then. Would the 10 cents then just continue to only apply for 10,000 square feet or larger, or would we want that to then apply to all?
Yeah, across the board.
To all.
Well, it says you, you can adopt, like, state law requires 5 cents of the smaller retailers. So I have to look at that and bring the bill. But I think you could keep it at 5 for them, and do 10 for the, for the larger ones, if you wish. That would provide a different thing. So you would have to, your comment was to get, keep our own ordinance language. We can't. The ordinance would have to be exactly like the state law. The only two things they allow is the difference in bag fees and penalties.
Penalties.
So I don't read that tentatively, I'll go look it again, as saying you can't keep the 5 and 10 distinction. I don't think it says that your, your difference in bag fee must be uniform for all types, but we can check that out.
Councilwoman.
Well, while I want to be a trendsetter at 10 cents in some ways, I'd look at it as being, it gives Lake Oswego another sparkle of being expensive and the premium of Lake Oswego to do business. And I don't like that reputation. Anytime you have somebody do work to try to enter in, there's always the plus-plus that Lake Oswego always gets on bids and everything. And I just don't like the stigma of Lake Oswego being at 10 cents in the rest of the state, except for Ashland, which is okay.
It's all my fault.
It's all your fault.
For the Shakespeare.
Right. I just think for a retailer, especially with all the small retailers that we have in Lake Oswego, it's going to be confusion, and it's going to take a lot of education that we don't have the funding for. And I think in the bigger picture, keep it simple is the message that I would like to give to everyone, and that we conform. Because there's either, there's small businesses that have businesses in multiple jurisdictions around here that are still, they're not big corporations, and their systems are not always easy just to change around. So it costs money to do it, and especially if we change our minds later, I don't want to put small businesses through that, that additional cost. So I would support the option three, to keep the, to conform with our city code at 5 cents.
Councilman Lamont?
So I have a question, but not for Jenny, but for our expert restaurateur that's sitting on the panel. And so if I have this right, the smaller, under the 40,000, right?
Under 10,000 square, and restaurants are treated a little different.
Yeah, it's exempt today from our 10 cents, but they will have to do the 5 for the state.
No.
No.
So they only have to do a 5 cents if they're using reusable plastic bags, not paper bags.
Yeah, talk about not simple, yeah. So I guess the question for Councilman Winn would be, what do you think would work for you as a small business that's under 10,000, knowing you have other locations? But, you know, what would work to make your life easier? You can collect something, but.
I mean, for us, we probably wouldn't collect anything, quite frankly, because I don't want people, we have soup, for example. And so we don't want people cram in four things of soup in one, I can get it with one bag, they walk out the front door, and it just spills on, so that's not what we want to happen. So I think that, the way that the House Bill was written, I think it was probably in anticipation that, for restaurants and for especially hot foods and things like that, it may not be as practical. We, while we recognize we want to be able to save. We, while we recognize we want to be able to save bags to prevent the spill of, you know, your lemon grass chili chicken on your shirt versus going to Home Depot and getting, you know, a package of masking tape and some paint brushes or something. There's a little bit difference there. So less of a potential for heartache later, but...
So which one do you think works best for you as a small business?
For me, I really think that the behavior, the changing of the behavior part is important for me.
10 cents.
I think that having the 10 cents is important because I think that we've, as we've seen, demonstrated through the bottle bill and through other types of things like that, I think that we, and I think that in some ways, and I recognize Counselor Winland's comments about, you know, having the extra stigma of being an expensive place to do business. But I think it also gives, much like when we live in Lake Oswego, people know we're known for our trees. And you can't just come here and cut down trees and you can't just, because that's something we as a community value. And I think this, you know, if we message, you know, I think it's important about how we message it too. It's not that we're trying to put a tax on small business, it's that we are also trying to make an impact, a positive impact on the environment. So if we, you know, I know, understand that it, but I don't think the five cents is going to make or break, instead of Lake Oswego as a place not to do business because it's expensive.
Counselor Colehoff.
Yeah. Well, originally, I didn't vote for it because of the 10 cents. So my vote is almost always going to be, let's revert back to the state law. And then you don't have issues and everybody understands what it is and we live with the uniformity.
Mayor, might I clarify or not something? Two things first. I'll need to get a copy of the bill. It could be I spoke too soon in saying you can have the differences between small and large retailers. Because it says in the bill, as I recall, every provision must be identical in terms of definitions and provision enforcement, except you can change the bag fee. So honestly, I'm not confident without researching that bill a little bit where you can have two different bag fees, because then you've got to change some of the other provisions of the law. So I'm not, I can take a break and go get it and see what's there, but if that's where you're going, that might not be possible. You might have to do the 10 cent across the board for all retailers or five percent, five cents across the board.
May I have my question? Has there been a motion that's been made?
We don't have a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt option three.
Second.
What is option three?
Option three is five cents for every bag, regardless of size of the retailer. It's basically state, keeps state law, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Discussion. Further discussion.
I can just add to David's really quickly is that the state law and the definitions doesn't differentiate between size. So there's one definition for retail establishment and one definition for restaurant that we would be forced to adopt.
So making the distinction would require a different definition. I'm not sure we could do that. But anyway, Penny, if this motion passes, that's academic.
It sounds like we're heading down the path that no, we're not going to get a unanimous agreement here, so maybe we can, where can we come up from common ground on this?
Seven and a half cents.
Not exactly what I was thinking, but...
Seven forty-nine.
Okay, so I think we're close. If I got this right, we have to change it to the state stuff anyway, the whole new ordinance. So all the definitions are the same, town to town to town. So Daniel, with four different locations or whatever, is going to have the same in Oregon. I get that and I think it's, we got to do it. We've just got to clean it up and follow that, especially if it's just not getting into this tier of small and big and large and all that. I think it'll make all of ours, yours and yours, lives better. I agree on the 10 cent as a behavior modification, I really do. And this is money that they collect. It's not a tax to them. It's that they collect to help cover the cost of the bags that they will now have to give instead of plastic bags. And I agree with Counselor Mans and our other counselors. We are making change out there with our folks that are on, our residents and our businesses. And I think number three, or no, number two, take the whole state thing, revise it, make it clean and common, and then stick with our own 10 cent bag fee. That's my philosophy.
Okay, we'll have a motion made in a second. Will you call and roll?
Mayor Studebaker.
Yes.
Counselor Mans.
No.
Kohoff?
Yes.
Win?
No.
O'Neil?
No.
Lamott?
No.
And Winland?
Sadly, no. Yes.
Yes?
I, yes, I support it.
Okay, the motion does fail three to four.
I'll make a motion to amend LOC Chapter 26 to include identical definitions, restrictions, and requirements as HB 2509 as required while maintaining the 10 cent bag fee.
Second.
Just real clearly, maintain the 10 cent bag fee for retailers over 10,000 square feet or for everybody?
No, for the whole, just clean retailers.
All right.
Can I? Amen.
You want, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Winland.
I just want to let you know that you would have heard from the state, if the retailers that were charging 10 cents were losing money, you didn't hear one peep out of them at the five cent mark. So just so you know, your policy is padding the profits of retailers at the expense of people. So I'm just, I know it's behavioral change and I think we are getting behavioral change, but just throwing that out there.
Just, you know, if you ever priced paper bags, I've priced paper bags and I know, we've stopped using T-shirt bags for six, seven years now. Even though, even though we have restaurants outside of Portland, we'd already changed to paper bags like six years ago. So we have already adopted what Portland had done many years ago, banning plastic bags. But for a handle bag that's going to fit or a false food size, they're close to 30 cents a piece. So, I mean, five cents, 10 cents, we're still not, I wouldn't consider it a profit center at all.
All right. Would you call a roll on this, please?
So the motion is, as it's in your agenda packet, except that it is to maintain the 10 cent bag fee. So that's what you're voting on?
Number two. Number two.
Yeah. Okay, so...
And it wouldn't be just maintaining, it would be doing a 10% for all realtors.
Right.
Retailers.
You mean all retailers.
So that actually is increasing the fee for small ones.
Does that include restaurants?
Yes.
Everyone.
No. No, because under the state law, restaurants do not charge for paper bags.
What businesses then are not subject to the 10 cent bag?
It's, any retail, so a retail establishment under the law is a store that sells goods. The restaurants are included, but so, but under the state law, they have to pay five cents for a plastic, a thick plastic bag, which now we have to allow. So they would now, I suppose, be paying 10 cents for that thicker plastic bag.
This would include retailers, small retailers, say a clothing store.
Everybody.
They have to charge 10 cents if, or they couldn't do the plastic bags.
Everybody. So, I mean, the letters that I sent out a couple of weeks ago went to 230 businesses and, you know, probably not all of them, like veterinary services, they probably won't have to do it. But yes, no. Everybody that fits under the definition in the law is a retail establishment or a restaurant.
Wait, no, now we're confused. So retailers, yes, restaurants, no.
Restaurants, no. For a paper bag, our ordinance, we didn't say that they could charge for a plastic bag because we just didn't allow any sort of thickness plastic bag. The state law does allow a plastic bag to be called reusable and restaurants have to charge. I mean, it's a messy bill to begin with and we have to adopt that, so...
Let me be clear, they, somebody like a clothing store.
Yeah.
They can use plastic bags without, they can still use plastic bags?
Thick ones.
Yes. So the state law allows plastic bags that are thicker than four mils to be defined as reusable.
But they have to be thicker than four mils.
Yeah. And again, some, I don't remember who mentioned it, but we're, I mean, we're not going to go out and measure it, but...
So you, it's not just you bring in that four mil, the restaurateur could have the four mil there or whoever.
Yeah.
And it's allowed.
Yeah, they're allowed under this, I mean, it's the magic of the American Chemistry Council writing legislation, but here we are. And so, yes. But for restaurants, it's especially confusing because they don't have to charge for paper, but they do have to charge. Now, those reusable plastic bags, as the state is calling them, are incredibly expensive. So there isn't a good reason for a lot of stores to have them in the first place, but...
Except for soup.
We don't even use that for, I mean, no. We've stopped using plastic bags many years ago.
I think, well, we're going to take a vote, but I think we're way too early to be making these kinds of changes before we saw what the effect of this thing should be. But let's take the vote.
Hold on one second, but this, again, so the state law says regardless, any retailer has to charge a minimum of five cents anyways, large or small, as it stands, state law already makes, so at this point, the question is whether it's five cents or 10 cents. But if we don't change anything, the state law...
Well, I have to change, charge five cents for a paper bag, correct?
Yeah, so as of January...
But they can also use plastic bags.
Thicker plastic bags.
If they're greater than four mil.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But they charge 10 cents.
Which they won't because it's very expensive.
Yeah. Yeah. So under, so as of January 1, every retailer in Lake Oswego already should be charging five cents for a paper bag or if they're a restaurant, a thicker plastic bag.
All right. Thank you. Cole.
Okay. Mayor Studebaker.
No.
Counselor Mans.
Yes.
Kohoff?
No.
Win?
Yes.
And O'Neil?
Yes.
Lamott?
Yes.
And Winland?
No and no. So it's a tie vote.
So the motion has...
Good try.
That's a no-no?
That is a no-no.
Okay, next item of business is consent agenda. Let me do, say a couple of things. Before we adopt it, I'd like to call your attention to corrections. First of all, in item 9.5, the meeting minutes for December 5, 2019, on page two, paragraph four, the first sentence, the word transportation should not be transportation, it should be tourism. So the final minutes will reflect this change, but I need, and then in item 9.6, Exhibit B to Resolution 20-03, page two, the 2020 representative to impact was not listed, it should be listed as Teresa Kohoff, and the final exhibit will reflect that change.
And Mayor, I think...
9.6, you said?
That's 9.6. Now, we've had, item 9.3 has been requested to be taken off of the consent agenda, but I would like to go ahead and get the consent agenda approved absent item 9.3 and with the changes I mentioned.
Move to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item 9.3.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, Counselor Lamott, you wanted to remove item 9.3. You want to inform us what the issue is?
Well, I think John's got it.
Well, I, I'm sorry. I don't have 9.6 on...
Yeah.
I think I made a mistake in the numbering. So 9.6 is the resolution to adopt your board and commission liaison assignments.
I have 9.6.
I'm sorry, should I have?
Yeah.
Have it on the paper copy.
Yeah, the paper copy does not reflect that. And Counselor Winland, I believe that it's misnumbered online currently.
Oh, it's 9.1 twice. Gotcha.
9.6 is mislabeled 9.5 on the laser fish.
Right.
9.6 is the appointment of liaisons.
Yeah.
It's online.
Okay.
My screen.
Now, do we still want, still want to have 9.3?
Yes. First question, I think you've answered some of them, is I still am unclear as to why we're hiring consultants to evaluate this building when we're having it torn down. I can't understand why one hour would be...
So they're not going to evaluate this building, it's the new one? If the new one is up by the time that they get the...
Well, help me out then. If they're not doing this, that's great, and they're doing the new one, but we have professional architects that are designing it to ADA, why are we checking if the professional architects are doing ADA?
So part of what the ADA transition plan includes is programmatic issues that are internal, not just the building structures itself, but there are issues about accessibility, the smallest of things of like, what kind of audio services do you have in here? Also, things about how your presentation is on, you know, if we have, what do you call it, screens or things like that. So it's just, it should be fairly minimal, but was just, in order to have a comprehensive plan, we want to say, yes, we looked at the new city hall and it's fine. And it's just kind of checking that box if we need to, but it should be a fairly quick review. But they suggested, and we, because we had that very same question during the interview process, and they suggested, well, just to be consistent and make sure that we've looked at it all with the same lens and all the same issues and the programmatic issues, things like that, that they take a look at that.
And they'll come back once it's up. If they've finished early, they'll come back and finish the city hall.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And the same with the Public Works Department, too.
So I would, I would make a motion to adopt item 9.3.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who was that second? I'm sorry.
Counselor Mans.
Counselor Mans with a sinus.
Any discussion?
Trigger, Mans.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right.
Thank you.
Any information from counsel?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Lamott.
I want to follow up Counselor Winland's question, which I had the same question of what to do with Woodmont Park. I think there's a timing issue. And so whether Manager Bennett or Counselor Powell says, we can make that decision tonight to free up the Parks Department to go ahead and start working with Woodmont folks again.
So I actually, I'm sorry, we didn't hit a break. I do have a question for Scott Segal, if you wouldn't mind. I actually think we have in code a process for how we do park planning, do we not, in the development code?
Well, a park master plan is in development code, but Scott, can we...
What is the code required? I guess I'm concerned, I don't think you can just start it up by convening a neighborhood group. I think you've got requirements in your own code.
You mean if the process was stopped?
I may be able to help with this, City Manager Bennett. The code does have what's called a park master plan approval. And it's not a requirement that all city parks go through that master planning land use process, but it's a process that's available for parks that have a list of, specific list of projects that the city is wanting to have that entitlement for so that future improvements are not having to go through a conditional use process essentially for each element of that, of that plan.
But Woodmont Park does have this approval.
Woodmont Park does not have the land use master plan. It's going through a facilities master plan, as I understand it.
But there's, it's approved by the council?
It has a conditional, the project has a conditional use permit approval. And that's valid.
So I guess I just want to be realistic about what starting it up means. I think that the folks who testified in front of you tonight expect that you could start up the process and they can have a few neighborhood meetings and they could be digging dirt in two months. And I just think that's not realistic.
Well, I was there. That's not the intent. They just felt that the master plan was approved, they got a plan, they want to get it going in this new year. They want to wait and kick another one or two years into this. They want to refine it. Now, whether the bathroom's going to be pulled or not, they'll decide it. But that's all they were asked. they were asked. They didn't want to start from scratch, believe me.
So what, what we would look at is any changes to the approved plan, are they, is the, the plan still in substantial compliance with the DRC's approval?
Right.
And so removing elements, if it's not increasing the parking load or traffic, and if it's not adding any components that were, you know, not approved, it could be found to be in substantial compliance, in which case it'd be a minor modification or not.
They all use the word refinement, I'm sorry, John.
Well, I mean, I, we stopped the process, I mean, we can't start it, we can't by decree.
I think they're two different things. There's the land use side of it and the approval, then there's you as the property owners, right? Directing staff to say, okay, begin whatever process is necessary to do, you know, to change your non-land use master plan, et cetera. What Scott's addressing then is would that, whatever results with that, then have to go to DRC for approval for the city in its regulatory capacity or not, correct? So there isn't anything, reason, although I think the City Manager is a good point, there's a lot involved here, rather than making a stamp decision and directing staff what to do. I'm hearing council say at a different level here, do we want to direct park staff or city management to begin the process to review some different kind of plan, small M master plan for Woodmont Park?
I just know that they went through a very specific process that somehow was laid out in advance, and so I guess I'm concerned about what would happen if you go through this multi-year process with a larger group of stakeholders, and then you convene the smaller groups to, to, when you've been through all these approvals, and I realize that, that there was still objection by the neighbors, but I just, I've read the emails and I, my only real concern and caveat to you is just the idea that, that this will be quick, and that we'll just get it done, and we'll be out to bid again, and we'll be building a park this summer. That's not realistic.
Well, I, I, I mean, that was the 17th of December, I think, when we.
Yeah, but we've already canceled the procurement, which is what you told us to do, so we have to bid.
I understand that, but I think one of the things that we did learn is that I don't think all the groups were talking to each other and everybody was on the same page.
I agree.
I'm encouraging dialogue between Ivan and company to just get us back on track to whatever that is from a legal standpoint of view. I'm saying, let's move forward with the planning process, I mean, however you want to do it, but I, I walked away from the December 17 meeting knowing that we had a lot of different interested parties that should have all been at the table to figure out the right solution. And I understand maybe some people had some last minute move-arounds, but I think since then, they've met, they've had a, some members have met, they've had a good discussion to where they want to get along and figure out the best possible thing. All I'm saying is what's the mechanism for the city council to say?
Do it.
Do it. Are we in support of doing that?
So why don't I recommend, though, that you ask the Parks Board to make a, as opposed to us trying to figure this out tonight in the, in a council meeting and solve the problem, which I think will lead us to do, I mean, I think if, if we had known more on the 17th, staff might have recommended that you do something slightly different than you actually ended up doing, so, but as opposed to us trying to legislate what the answer is, why don't we say, Parks Board, take another look at this and figure out a way to kickstart the planning process? Because I guess my concern is there's been a lot of public process that went into the master plan that you heard concerns about in December 17, and I think you're going to have to engage more than just the folks who've had a chance to meet.
Well, that's not what they're proposing, though. They, they said this, when they came down at the end of the morning, they said, we realized there was a legitimate process, and they patted the Parks Department and us, all of us on our back for that.
Right.
That it was a plan that was heavily worked on, that we do more process than any other city really, or many cities, and that there was a lot of legitimacy, and the word refinement came out from all their mouths. We're not talking about throwing the baby in the bathwater out and not starting the process. The bathroom was one issue, and maybe how much invasive. The more they talked about invasive, they realized if we depend on the volunteers, it will take 100 years. So all they were asking was if we were really truly going to intend to do this in the spring, which we should to get it going, it's been 22 years, can we get back together with all the groups, including rise it right up to the Parks Board and then us, and get it ready for construction?
So I don't know the answer to that question. What I'm asking you to do is, is ask the Parks Board to figure out the process as opposed to us trying to legislate the process tonight.
But what process they're going to tell us?
Before we do that, Council Kohoff asked us.
So I didn't want this on the agenda, so I understand it as information from council, which is fine. I thought I knew what I was doing on December 17, so I'm not at all wanting to rush anything one way or the other, that, so if it goes back to the park, Park Commission, Park Department?
Parks and Natural Resources Board.
I would personally not want it to say to direct them to do anything, to, to start it up or whatever it is. And part of the reason I say that, on top of the fact that I already voted on this in December 17, was that you have this new initiative coming up, which will, in fact, if passed, put on the ballot, the, um.
The inability.
This park, and so you've got, from my perspective, a lot of things happening that could, unless your plan is to rush in there and do something, which eventually, you know, is going to come up against this, this petition, and my understanding is that their hope is to have that, the signature requirement done by the end of January for May, I believe it's 19th or 17th is the primary. So that's another reason why I, I'm okay if you want to send it back, and I certainly don't want us to do something harebrained right now, but I don't want it with a directive that we're for or against. We just, if they want to send it back, it's for more discussion.
What, what, this is not harebrained, this is, they've come to us and said, would you open the process so we can knock on the door of the Parks Department? There's no decisions being made.
No, I said that we don't do something harebrained right now.
Tonight is just to open the process for our neighbors to go and meet. And, and, and I don't understand what the big thing is, in that petition, I'm hoping fails, because you heard us talk about it before. That's going to handcuff us, that's got nothing to do with this park. We got to get this park built 22 years later, and that's what we need to do tonight, open it up so staff can sit down, because what will happen is we have to wait for the Parks Board, then they have to send something to us, then we have to bless it, then Ivan will open his door to them, and then they will have discussion, and we're going to lose two or three months. If the department was ready to go with the spring, let's go.
All right, can you?
You know, I guess if, if you all, I mean, if you want to put a motion on the table, tell us what to do, I'm happy to hear it. I mean, I, I, I'm just very concerned that what you're doing is end running a, an established process that ran its course, and, and so I guess that's.
Okay, but I, on the 17th, we did not pass the contract that was submitted to us.
You actually directed us to cancel the procurement, and so we did.
Okay, well.
So we'd have to rebid the project.
I thought we were going to not approve the contract, because I didn't think everything on the contract was correct, so maybe I was misinformed in that, in that process, but I agree with Council Lamont, if we kind of go through the typical bureaucratic process, it's, it's going to be a long, long time.
Well, let's, let's do this.
So.
Let's take, how many of you, just to, just to take a nod, how many would like to go back to the Parks Board and tell them, take another look at this, see if they can get some consensus on what the people want to do? How many would like to see that happen?
That's the way to do it.
Let's do that.
Yeah, that's, I, thank you, that's a great thing to do.
I feel like we should, I should have a record of what you just.
Okay, I'd like some discussion on that, then.
So this is yes to go back to the Parks Board, and can I see who raised their hands to return to the Parks Board?
So two of the three folks who testified tonight are on the Parks Board. You are convening the same group by sending it to the Parks Board. You're, you're accomplishing the same objective, you're just doing it in a public meeting with a public process.
I don't think we necessarily need a motion to do this, we can just.
Amberi was asking for a motion.
Raise your hands again, who?
If you wanted to go back to the Parks Board, I see that Councilors O'Neil, Manns, and Kohoff, and now Nguyen.
Well, if that's the only option.
And Studebaker.
And Mayor, thank you.
Bring it back to the Parks Board for what? To bless them to go meet with, with, with staff or to do something? They have them in here.
Well, the Parks Board meets with staff once a month. The same folks who testified tonight are on the Parks Board. You're accomplishing the same thing, you're just doing it in a way that's at a notice public meeting.
Well, we weren't saying not to do it in a notice public meeting.
Right, and we're not saying go into the dark corners with the cigars, we're saying here.
I don't understand the difference, I'm sorry.
We were just trying to get a consensus of what they want, and we're asking them to try and develop that. It's not that difficult, and it shouldn't have to be that formal either.
And here's their list. Council today approves reopening the development process, enabling staff to work with the neighborhood leaders. January 7 through the 21st, staff works with the neighborhood, refine the Woodmont plant. Late January, meet with neighborhood to continue to look at the refinements and changes planned. Early February, complete refinements. Late February, early March, bring to LO Parks Advisory Board and City Council for final approval and get it out for construction. It's the same process, they're opening up to anybody and their brother, six, seven different parties that were involved. Advisory Committee, the, the friends of this, the that, and the other thing. I just think we're losing time again, that's.
You've had a motion and a vote, all right, let's go ahead with it.
Okay.
So what are the, can I ask what the instructions to the Park and Rec Committee are, then?
What is the motion, yeah?
I mean, I think the question is, how could they evaluate modifications to the plans for Woodmont Park to address neighborhood concerns?
Yes.
It's pretty straight up.
Yes.
Hey, well, then I'm, I can support that.
They're opening the process.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a wasted meeting.
They're going to see if they can modify the design for Woodmont Park to address neighborhood concerns. It's the same process.
And they don't need to come to us for approval for that.
Well, eventually, the, just like last time, the contract will have to come to you.
The refinements will come, but not the process.
Then, I'm in favor of that, then?
I am in favor of it, too.
All right, is there any information that this council wants to provide for others besides, besides what Council Lamont said?
No, because I just got my liaison appointment, so I'll wait until next time until I make my speech.
Okay, then we're adjourned, we will take a five-minute break and meet us, Laura.
Oh, I forgot about.
Hi, I'm Kate Pistoris, I'm one of the managers here at Healthy Pet in Lake Oswego. We're a holistic pet supply store, so we really like to focus on having like super premium foods, we're really into nutrition, and just really high-quality products that you may not get in like the bigger box stores. We have pretty incredible customers, you know, not only are they amazing because they continue to support us as a small independent business in a world of, you know, online shopping and, and big retailers, but it's really incredible to see what they're willing to do for their pets, even for our pets. We, we often have a store kitty who's like a rescued older cat that wouldn't necessarily find another home, and we've had to do fundraisers, and it's amazing what people in this community are able to, to come together and do. So this is Tofu, and within about a month of getting her, we, you know, put out a jar and we asked the community, and we were able to raise enough money for her to get this crazy radioactive iodine treatment that actually cures her, cures cats of hyperthyroidism. Just want to thank everyone for continuing to support us, Healthy Pet and other local businesses during the construction. For more information about the project, visit boonesferyproject.org, and remember to follow the blue cones.
Okay, we're convening a meeting of Laura now, so what, the first thing to do is to get a project update and a possible increase in Phase One.
Don't we have a, Laura call?
Yes, good evening, Chair Studebaker, members of the board. My opening statement is, we're on schedule and under the, or at the budget that the board had approved in July.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
So we, work is, we broke around it about six months ago. Things have been going pretty well. We've hit two major milestones. One is the excavation of the site, and that was probably our biggest concern and unknown at the time. Yes, we did hit boulders, but certainly not as many that we'd anticipated. The second piece of it is we, we did the full 30-inch max slab for the foundation, and that went very well as well. Two different days, they were probably eight, 12-hour days, something like that. Our next milestone that we, we're looking at is the topping out ceremony, which is placing the, the highest and main beam for the building, and that's going to be late March, April sometime, and in between there, they're going to be working on putting up the rest of the walls, the steel structure. So we're, we're certainly excited to, for that event, and certainly we're excited to invite the board to attend that meeting as well.
Is that where the mayor puts the last bolt in, up there, climbs up and?
We, we could, if, if that's a request, certainly we can do it. So this evening, the board is being asked to increase the guaranteed maximum price, price for Phase One of this project. That increase would be $1,147,150. So that increases the total GMP for the construction to $31,634,45,000. The, if you recall, back in July, the board had approved a budget of about $43 million. That included 4.5 million in contingency. $3 million was the city portion of that contingency. 1.5 was the contingency for the contractor in that project. So certainly, we'd anticipated and planned for some of these things. I did want to make a clarification on that, is that the 1.1 million would be coming from the city contingency piece, so we would have about 1.5 left in that. Contractors used about $150,000 of their contingency. So overall, we're still running a fairly healthy contingency of about 3.25 million. If this is approved this evening, that's about 70%. We have, as I said, hit some major milestones, but we certainly, we think we'll be coming back for another GMP, which is for the Phase Two portion, which is demo of this building, surface parking, and the civic plaza on this side. There may be other design-related issues. So, but we, we feel like we dodged the bullet on our excavation, and so we'll continue to look for ways to, to reduce cost in that. But with that, I'd like to go ahead and conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We certainly recommend the approval of the increase of the GMP.
Are we still on schedule for construction completion?
Yes, yeah. Move-in would be probably around March of 2021 for the Phase One. Phase Two would be fall 2021.
Thank you. Other questions, anybody?
Move to approve an increase in the guaranteed maximum price using the project contingency?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
So I'm going to vote for this, but I have to tell you that I remember sitting here, and we said 40 million, that's it, 40 million. You take a hinge off, you do something, but you stay in 40 million. And then before you know it, it's 42, 42, or that's it. And now we're saying 43, and we're coming back for more. And that's really problematic, and you've been hearing a theme tonight. And I think that, you know, when you start hearing it from somebody like me, I think it's a good idea that we pay really close attention to this, that you're, you're, you're asking us to say yes, and then we're going to go to Budget Committee, and then they're going to start in on us. I want to know what we were thinking, just paying and paying and paying. So, like I said, a word to the wise is sufficient.
Sure, sure. And I, I understand where you're coming from, and this has been a long process. I believe the 40 million was initially discussed when we were talking about just building the new city hall next door. And then that had increased when we added, when the, the board added demo of this building, construction of the surface parking, as well as a civic plaza, and that was about a 2.5 million increase. And so that's why we ended up getting to about 43 million. And that was the, the number, it was actually 42,993, that the floor board had approved in July of 2019. And so the budget, and, and we had included the 4.5 million in all of that, so certainly that, I, I understand what, what you're saying, and our goal is to certainly keep it at that 42,993.
Any further, any further statements?
Lower. Yes.
Any further statements or discussion? Okay? We've, we've agreed, we've passed the motion, correct?
Yes, you did, 7-0 is what I understood.
We are adjourned.
We need to approve the, move to approve minutes as written on 14.2.
I'm sorry.
It's the back page.
Second? Oh, did somebody already second? I can't do it.
Okay, so we, our motions were made and seconded to approve the minutes for Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you very much for calling my attention. All right, now we're adjourned.